Yeah, I think I called meeting order at 7:00. It's 7:01 this morning. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is approve the minutes from March 10th, 2025 and March 24th, 2025 regular meetings. What about the motion?
I say move to approve the minutes from the March 10th, 2025 and March 24th, 2025 regular meetings.
Okay, then with the motion on the second?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion or corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carried. All right, thank you. Item 1B, additions to the agenda?
Item 1. Hi.
So you're done. Item 1C, Amanda, comments? We'll be hearing from you shortly. Item 2, Chairperson's Report. Hey, not my report. Just wanted to remind the board we have until next week to let Lisa know about the retirement celebration on May 14th. You received an email about it a couple of weeks ago, and I think Lisa's going to be sending out another one tomorrow.
No, from me, Lisa.
And just let the board know at the Board of Finance meeting and the town hearing, they approved bringing to the town meeting next week a 4.1% increase for the Board of Education. So that will be at the town meeting, and then there's going to be, they're setting a date for a town referendum. And... That's the last item on my report. Go to Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. I have to think back to the last time we met, and it actually was in March, and at that time, it was Board of Ed Appreciation Month. So I did have a little token gift for everyone, and I read something that kind of showed my thanks to the board. And there are a few of you that weren't here, so if you are not here, I did bring the gift with me and the little write-up. So please make sure, and off the top of my head, I can't remember who was here in March, it seemed like forever ago, but please, you know, make sure you grab your little "thank you." Okay, item 3A, Student Activities Report. We have been tasked with our student activities report and primarily our student activity, our class graduation fund. Student Activities Report is a mini silos under that one umbrella, which I've explained a number of times before. So we are, we're going to share the, where we are right now with our entire student activities, and we'll hone in a little bit on the student count since that has been a topic of conversation in the past. Moving forward, our business manager, Mrs. Hine, and I have talked about, and we feel that we will attach the Student Activities Report to the financials quarterly. So it is part of the audit. So just so everyone knows, it is part of the audit every year. It gets audited just like all of our other items. However, we will do a very kind of focused Student Activities Report quarterly so that the board is well aware. And again, that includes much more than just student accounts. We've had student accounts go back 20 years. We have made a, you know, it took 20 years, and we were given one year to rectify it. So we have made great gainway. I think we're just waiting for two more classes. So out of all the classes, we have reached, the students, the officers have gotten back to us with how they'd like to use their funds that maybe were not expended at the end of the year. We have two more that are debating, and then two more we still haven't reached yet, two more classes. So we've made really good progress with that. And of course, beginning with last year, we have changed kind of our end-year process to ensure that we know where classes would like to utilize, any funds that they might have left over at the end of the year. Should we just hold off and do it with the financials?
Okay.
Does that sound okay? We'll do it at the end of the financials for approval since it all goes together.
Great.
Okay. So thank you for your patience in that. I think, I think you'll see that, you know, we're, like I said, it gets audited, we have been fine with our audits, but we have made a diligent effort with our class accounts, and it's going to be a bigger focus. Okay, 3B, Graduation Requirements. Now, Margery, for a minute, I thought you stepped up because I don't see you sitting on the other side.
Sorry.
We are, I'm going to, I'll just give a little bit of a summary. The Policy Committee is working very hard at having a full policy manual for the beginning of the school year. We, we will have that done. However, we have one policy we'd like to bring forth ahead of time for a couple of reasons, and, well, for one main reason. And that's because if we're looking at our next graduating class, we have some work over the summer for handbooks and such, and our students are just now, obviously, choosing classes for next school year. So we're, we're in a little bit of a, an awkward time period for this, but I believe it's the desire to have this in effect for the '25-'26 school year, which will be the graduating class of 2026. So the policy that, Margery, will, Mrs. Leiter, Director of Curriculum and Professional Development, will highlight, has been discussed before the curriculum, with the Curriculum Committee, as well as our Policy Committee for the pieces that result in our actual written policy. Mrs. Leiter.
Hello there.
Hello.
Welcome. I'll stand here so you can see me. I used Shipman &amp; Goodman's template to create this, and I also looked at area, school districts, so Avon, Granby, Simsbury, South Windsor, Suffield, and West Hartford, just to make sure that what I was doing is in alignment. I also worked with not only the committees, but also these two high school counselors and the administration of the high school. And Missy and I worked on it together. So in the policy, one of the things that it does is that it organizes classes by Humanities and STEM, and then it reflects the new graduation requirements in PE, Health and Safety. It was .5 in our current, but in the state, it's one credit per Health and one per PE. World Language, the state requirement is one credit, and we currently have two. We do encourage our students who are college-bound to take at least three credits of World Language, but this allows students who struggle with language to be able to graduate and have the one class instead of forcing them to take other classes when they could be maybe taking like a really real math class or something like that. Personal Finance is a state requirement at .5, and then this configuration gives them three and a half electives for credit, for a total of 25 credits. All of the language, I don't know, do I read every paragraph? I don't think you do now.
I think you need to, I mean, because it, because this is the first read, so we'll be able to read it on our own, and then, yeah, probably some of that highlight, yeah.
On, on page 2, it's all Shipman &amp; Goodman language, verbatim, until you go to the sixth paragraph down, and they had in parentheses what the grading is, and so it's, we have numerical, also 73 or higher. And then the penultimate paragraph on the second page is, "Students may earn one-half credit for documented community service, provided it is supervised by administrator or teacher, and consists of not less than 50 hours." This is what other districts in the area are doing. Students still have, just as a note, students will still have mandated service in civics class, which is a class that you have to take in order to graduate. So all students will be having service credit, just not the way it's done currently.
I'm sorry, and the service credit goes against which category?
So it's, it's in civics, which is in Humanities. There's a requirement within that class. And then in addition to that, that's a requirement, students may take, sort of like an independent study idea?
Yeah.
May take and earn additional credit by doing more service. An additional community service.
If I may, correction from, I'm wrong, Mrs. Leiter. We used to have a quarter credit requirement for community service, and that seemed to have been up against a quarter credit PE. So PE credits have changed, so we had this weird quarter credit kind of standing out. So we all feel it's really important for community service, and that has been embedded within the civics course, and then it still allows for additional community service through this kind of independent study here.
On the third page, it talks about the Connecticut SEAL of Biliarity and the Connecticut SEAL of Global Engagement, and those are both options that students can earn by taking specific classes that are noted in our program of studies. The fourth one down is the Honorary Diplomas for Veterans, which is in our current program and is an option through Shipman &amp; Goodman, so it is included here again. But it is a state requirement that districts offer that to people who have served and missed high school graduation because they were serving. And it's for Korean or Vietnam veteran, and if there were any remaining World War II veterans. The district performance standards are East Granby Public School Performance Standards, and those are in our current one, and those will remain in this one. Also, that was an option of your Shipman &amp; Goodman. And then the final, on page 4, the final, is a new state requirement that goes into effect in 2027 and thereafter, which requires a student's family or student to complete FAFSA application. And if they do not complete it, then they must complete a waiver of the, saying that they request a waiver for not completing the FAFSA, and this is state law, not choice. And on the last page, page 5, is the information about transfer students in special education, which was previously in our policy and will be continued, how these students, their transcripts are treated when they come into our district for a transfer student. So they're, if they came to us from Windsor-Lox, let's say, then their Windsor-Lox report card would go to a university with their East Granby, but their Windsor-Lox grades don't figure into their GPA at East Granby. And then the very last one is about graduation if a student has been through a period of expulsion, which is a Shipman &amp; Goodman's language. Are there any questions?
I guess my only question, they probably know, the Veterans Association, are they aware of this, if they can get a high school graduation certificate? Because I know this has been around for a while. I just was wondering whether we could notify the veterans in town. I'm not sure if people know this exists. I don't know if anyone, be needed, but I think it would be something, it would be nice at least that the Veterans Association know that. I looked, I see Mark and Ricky aren't here tonight, ask them to bring it up. There may be someone in town, and I would imagine.
Especially if you were living in another state as a veteran of Vietnam, and you moved to Connecticut, and you don't know.
That's a good point.
Margery, would you mind making that contact?
Sure, I'll make that.
If you need a name, I can give you a name.
And I guess, I heard you say in World Language, World Language before we had two, and now we've dropped it down to one.
To match the state grade.
That's going to help.
And we still encourage you to take as many, I mean, we have students who take five years of language now because they start in eighth grade, and then they go through AP or Spanish body.
Good. Anyone else have anything? This is only the first reading, we're not voting on it tonight. We'll have a second reading when we hold on it.
Is the, I'm sorry, is the eighth grade accumulation of high school credit, is that current practice, or is that?
Yes, that was voted on when Dr. Charles was the interim superintendent.
And it's...
It's math, Algebra I and, yes. Some students take, some students do not take Algebra I, and some students do not take the high school World Language. Some students take eighth grade math, and some students take like a picture of three language.
If I remember correctly, you said that that was in order to free up their schedules a little bit more once they got to high school so they could take more advanced classes.
Students who were eager to take physics, calculus, AP classes, were having difficulty because we have seven periods in a day, and we have 25 credits, and so they wanted to get started so that they could get higher up when they were in high school.
Just that, I'm sorry, just that C average is 73.
Some of them have D.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, we debated that a bit.
It works for, it works for me now when you think in terms of one credit for the World Language, but it doesn't work for me when it was two credits, because if I'm getting a 74 in my eighth grade, and I have to take another credit in World Language. Someone who struggled in high school.
And students who go from middle school into high school oftentimes do almost like a repeat of a class because they have struggled, even if they do get that.
Even if they got the credit.
They meet that grade, they, they meet with the parents, the middle school teachers meet with the parents, and they talk about the needs of the student, and how the student could benefit from having more time.
Right.
And some take advantage of doing it a second year, and, you know, some don't.
And, right, yeah.
It's nice for some kids to have that option, which is.
Do they have to take a language in eighth grade?
They take, there are, there are a couple of them that are, you know.
If they didn't like to take a language, maybe it'd help limit them, but then they have to because there's only seven periods in a day, so it'd be too hard to get the credits.
I think I hit 22, so I can see why that would happen. I just think, because I know when kids do retake Spanish one, it is retaking the same as that class over, so it can be.
When they're doing eighth grade to ninth grade?
Yeah, you're literally taking the same thing over, so it can be very overwhelming if you struggled the first time, and now you have to sit through it again. It's, so that's why sometimes eighth graders aren't ready to take it, so, but again, they have to if there's only seven periods.
There's a different type of a language class that they can take.
Got it.
If they're struggling to get the credit.
How does it fit in for opportunities for students? I understand, I guess some of the universities offer courses they can take or online courses. Where are we as far as allowing those type of things towards graduation credits?
We do, so that is in the handbook, the student handbook, instead of the graduation policy, because it can change as far as like companies that we go through and that kind of a thing. But as it stands right now in the student handbook, and it's also mentioned in the program of studies. And so a student can get preapproval to take the class through something that has been accredited, and then it doesn't go into their GPA, but it can go onto their transcript. So it could say a transfer class from a summer program that has none helped, they took a summer class, and it was business math, it would be on their transcript, but it wouldn't be part of their GPA.
But the credits would count?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If a student takes, but it has to be preapproved and through something that we said, yes, that, that's an acceptable place. So like, for instance, if a student failed the class during their sophomore year, then in that summertime, they could go to a school nearby that offers it, let's say Suffield or Granby, they could go there and take, retake that math class, and then we would accept that math class from a school that's a Connecticut school. And then also VHS, the company that we use for students to take online classes, we used it when we did not have AP Physics, and a few students took AP Physics through VHS. Because that has accreditation, we are able to put that into the students' book.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Missy, back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leiter. Let's see, item 3C, I, I just wanted to share, you know, the, it has been made public for two administrative retirements, but realized we haven't had a Board of Education meeting, so I just wanted to, as our practice has been, to announce the retirements of both Karen Gogel, Director of Student Support Services, and me.
Can we not accept?
Not accept.
You don't get to vote on those anymore if you don't.
Make life easy.
For us. So that, that's it, retirements right now.
Good.
Okay, moving to item 4 then, Recommended Actions. If I could get a motion on the floor so we can have Mary discuss the March 2025 financial report.
I'll move to approve the March 2025 financial report.
Motion was made by John on the second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Lynn. Okay, Mary.
First, we successfully locked in our heating oil rate for fiscal year '26 with state line oil at $2.60 a gallon.
That's a good deal, good price.
And then we had discussions with the town because we do the unleaded and the diesel fuel with the town, and we also locked that in, diesel at $2.53 and unleaded at $2.65. So we're locked in for next year. As we spoke earlier, our health insurance, our initial projections were estimated at 25% increase. So to mitigate this, we terminated our plan with Connecticut Care, and we are transitioning to Anthem. They had matched our current plan with no increase in premiums. We do have a slight increase in the budget because periodic changes, our enhancement additions, and plus our dental has increased. This is just medical that was just skyrocketing. I would talk a little bit about the student activity financials. What this reflects is just cash activity per month. It's a different way to do it on the system as our financials. So it's broken out by month, broken out down by school, so you have a high school, middle school, Seymour, and Ald Grove. And then, as you can see, the high school has a bunch of subcategories, the middle school has some, Seymour has some, and Ald Grove only has one. So the bigger the school, the more categories they have. The principals and advisors do receive a detailed report of the activity, so they get this, but they also get every detail on how many receipts came in and who was, and how many disbursements went out. So theirs is more detailed than the financials here. Looking at our, our Board of Ed financials, Opted 111 Certified Personnel, this is trending over budget due to the reallocation of two employees from grant funding to the operating budget. Looking ahead at fiscal year '26, we, we do plan to move approximately four staff there, so we started moving towards the end, moving them into our 111 line. Our 112 line, which is our non-certified personnel, the overages are due to two additional hires that were not budgeted for in previous year. However, we're still realizing some cost savings to reduce reliance on contracted care professionals, which are through CRAV, which is our 330 line. And this also includes care professionals that support our Hartford students, so you can see it's trending over because we will be reimbursing Hartford for those care that are in the 112 line, and that usually comes at the end of May.
Okay.
They have been billed, so we just, usually comes at the end of the May, so it's not booked yet. We talked about our 330 line, this is reflects increases related to student support services provided by contract vendors. That line, the 561 line, the 563 will all be applied, our excess cost reimbursement to address that, which, so we did start our excess costs, the numbers for 561 and 563, we've already received 227,745 in excess cost care, and we applied it against 561 and 563. They're still trending a little over, however, we're still expecting to have more excess costs come in, but it's, we never know. But as it does come in, we'll apply it against those two lines. Any questions on either student activities or the Board of Ed financials?
Anyone have a question or comment?
My only comment, Mary, I've been on the board a few years, and I've never seen anything like this before, student activities, very, very well done.
Thank you.
Shows a lot about the different schools, so it's very nice.
Thank you.
Okay. No more, no questions on it?
Good job on the insurance.
Yeah, the insurance, I'm surprised insurance is doing well. Okay, all those in favor of approving the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item 5, Agenda Items for Future Meetings. We have two down here. Anyone have any they would like to put on the list?
I guess my question, do we want to look at pay to participate to review that for a change for next year? I think we shared the data like at the last meeting in terms of what some surrounding districts are doing.
I guess.
Yes.
Yes, Lynn says yes, so yes, definitely. Okay. Item 6, Comments from Visitors.
I'm sorry, go back to John. Are we looking to go to committee to that, or are we looking to discuss in the board?
You know, as we were talking about that, I was actually thinking in my head, I'm wondering if through policy we could.
Changing a policy, we're changing a policy.
It's changing a policy, but the policy, the policy, and forgive me if I misspeak a little bit, but from memory, our policy, I believe, is very brief and just summarizes that the board will set the rates. I don't believe the rates are actually in policy.
Right, I doubt there is, because to give you the flexibility to change them, you don't have to change your policy. But did we incorporate something from Shipman &amp; Goodman as to pay to play?
We are working on it, we haven't gotten to that number yet. That's next, that's next session. And again, I apologize, off the top of my head, I don't recall the Shipman.
So if we have some discussion, or if we, if we have it as an agenda item, and if we look to take action on, what we'd be looking to do is, is to be looking at gross dollars and cents, and not actually looking at policy.
It seems that way, I agree.
Or we'd be looking at policy in the sense of how many, how many, how many siblings and, you know.
I don't think that's part of the policy.
I don't think so. I think it's really down to dollars and cents.
Yes, yes.
Which could be part of the administrative regulations in terms of how, you know, the policy is fulfilled, which it is currently.
Okay, there you go.
Anyone else?
We're just looking to see if there was a connection with the policy.
We flagged all the policies that need to have intervention, which pricing would be intervention.
My thought would be that we bring whatever is in the policy to the next meeting to discuss the dollars and cents, to, if there's anything to connect.
I suspect it's going to be generic. It's not going to have the pricing, it's going to say the board has the oversight.
Right.
That's what we're calling.
That's into overthinking now.
Yes, I agree.
Are you in executive session right now?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're going to be in less than five minutes.
Okay, just say it out loud so I can hear it.
I'll make sure I physically see you, so we could stay in here.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, anyone else on those two items?
I'm still looking. I don't know that I'm going to find it right now, so if we, if we put that on the meeting for next, we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, then those of us on policy will collectively come up with the reference points, so we can, yeah, our next share effectively.
And if it's only a few, few words, I mean, the board can look at that and come up with a motion and change it without sending it back for six months somewhere else.
And our next policy meeting is by 5.
Yeah, so I believe the policy, policy says the board will set the rate, so the Policy Committee can put forth, obviously, the policy, and then the board would need to decide on the rate structure and the fee structure.
Do we just want to add to the agenda for that meeting, re-review pay to participate just for sure?
Sure. Okay, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind doing that. Thank you.
Okay, item 6, Comments from Visitors.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your, thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Item 7, Executive Session Superintendent Search, can I get a motion?
I move that we go, sorry, I move that we go into.
I move that we go, sorry, I move that we go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's search. So I move. At least I don't.
Glad you talked before, we talked before about it.
Hold on, Missy would like to inter.
Do you want to invite someone?
Want to be invited?
It's up to, it's up to the board.
I would like to invite Missy Ann.
Would you be invited, would you?
She doesn't, we already talked about it. She's. Yes. All right, so as part of my motion, we'd like to invite Missy Bavaro Bronte to join executive session with the board, the members of the board that are here tonight.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Do you have a second? And I guess we do need a vote going into executive session, or we don't? Yeah, we do need a vote. Do we, John?
I think so, we need to discuss first then.
All those in favor of going to executive session, see if they say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, motion carried, going to executive session. Physically check with Mark.
Do you want me to do it?
I'll do it. Like, when I physically wanted to know that I got the.